Technically, this is a supplemental select board meeting because there's more than three members present. It's also the sewer district meeting, I guess, at the same time. So, yeah, not sure who runs what meeting or what, so.
Well, I'll just say, I'm Stephanie. I am the current board of the trustees here, and I'd like to welcome all our guests. And I'm just really looking forward to this opportunity to share information. And I'm going to turn it over to Jay Wheeler to kind of be our emcee.
Okay.
Before we start, if I may?
Yes, fire.
If it's an official meeting, we need to salute the flag.
We always do.
We can't.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I just, I'm gonna move quick. I just wanted to give you guys a, kind of build a picture. It's an opportunity. Glad to have everybody here to share basically what we've been through. James was interested in the financial page, so I printed out a fresh one. We don't have a, you know, the checking account isn't real big, but we've kept it fairly tight. We got a new auditor. I think Lisa Hughes has started that several years ago, four years ago. And, you know, as he told us, we said, well, geez, can we save money and invest it and make money? And basically, his advice was to, if we had any money, is to reinvest it. And for us, it was a no-brainer, because we've been chasing things that had short return on investment, you know, five-year, seven-year, three-year, whatever it was. Plus, we have, also have environmental responsibility, so we have to, we have to do those. The big page with the green on it, I just made that, I pulled that from our capital asset list, and I was looking for this picture, but this, it kind of fell into what I wanted to talk about. I came in 2008, shortly after, by the end of the next year, Prime was gone. They took 65% of the income, and we had a plant that really didn't work on what we were getting. We get a trickle coming through here, right? And we had gone to CDBG to try and change some things. We had some expensive blowers down here that were 200 horsepower and a 75. I mean, they were huge, and we just didn't need it. Our electric bill was 150 grand a month. We also had de-watering machines right across the way here for de-watering slugs that were 300 horsepower centrifuges that, you know, for years, years, several years, that we got to change, we wouldn't even run them. We tried to not run them on a bill, or one month or two months, if we could, because we had all these tanks, we'd just let it hang on there, because it would set the demand charge so high. It did just cost us a lot of money. Anyway, so what we were after with this money from CDBG was, we called it an optimization, and we were looking to exchange some of that high-power use equipment and improve a process. It didn't work, even after all our work of going around town and doing a survey, an income survey, to prove the US Census. It all worked out fine, because right after that, we learned about, we started hearing about nitrogen and possible limits someday, and all the stuff that's gone back and forth about that for years. And if we'd have made some changes, it may have been too much ahead of time. Shortly after that, we had an issue with the school street station. I think that was the last time we had selectmen together, right after we rebuilt that. And the work we did on the census paid off, because we used it with USDA to get a loan in order to do that rebuild, all right? One of the great things that came out of that is that, following the station rebuild, the package that we had was 1.4 million, and we had about, the 0.4 was the grant part that we had left over. The station, it cost us just over 1 million, you know, to do that upgrade, and we still had that 330,000 left, which was great. It worked out for us, because we got to do an improvement in order to improve our process. Just for the mental picture, this is the big plant that Prime left us. We have these giant concrete tanks, and those will never go anywhere. We can still use them. The problem is that you have to have the right equipment in order to run them, the great-sized blowers, mixers, pumps, and all that sort of stuff. What we did with that leftover money around 2014, I believe it was? No, it was later, it was later when Mike came here, 15, 16. Yeah. We basically built a train in one-third of the plant. We built a BNR, biological nutrient removal, right? Yeah, I never get it right. Basically, just playing with the bugs so they do the dirty work. And this worked great, to be honest. It really has. That said, moving along quick, going down the list, the stuff that's in green, I just want to point out, I colored that, because those are things that we have, we have loans, we have debts for. The stuff in the, I noted it, were some bigger items that are in black boxes, were things that we pulled out of whatever we had for savings or whatever we could. In the middle of the building, in the middle of the page, you see the furnace in the operations building. We had an oil burner there that was rated for 12 and a half gallons a minute for oil, and we really wanted to do something with that for years. And not having the money, we ended up, was right after CMP came here, and they said, hey, you built your office in the middle of our right-of-way, you gotta tear it down. It's like, what? After getting through that, all that long negotiation, we got underbended around the office, but there was a narrow strip on the far side of the, of the right-of-way, which had always been there, but it just wasn't used. And we sold a little, I don't know what it was, an acre, two acres, that ended up being to the metal site, because they had no good for us, but it got us that boiler, right? Whatever we could to move along. Yeah. Any questions? Further up, I guess, you know, some of the bigger things was, I mentioned the de-watering machine, yeah, those big power, yeah, guzzling machines we had. The de-watering machines up there towards the top, we bought the smallest Huber inclined screw, which is about the size of a wheelbarrow, and uses, I think, about 15 horsepower at the max, as opposed to 300.
It's like a horsepower.
Yeah. Yep. And, oh, really? Yeah, it's just, it's almost nothing, and it works fabulous. We ended up, we bought another, the next machine, yeah, the next bigger machine here a few years ago. So that's how we replaced that, and then it was the leftover money from the school street station, where we got to replace the blowers down back, because that was all part of refitting that one tank with the equipment in order to make it work. And that's where we started. Now, since then, you see, 2017 is when Mike came here, and he taught us a lot of things. One, we started trying to get more septicage to help create more cash flow. And what it's allowed us to do, excuse me, is that a lot of the things that we do have, well, let me back up. I wanted to say, the only, the only one of these investments, the green lines, was the school street loan from the USDA that we actually had to make an increase to the users in order to be able to afford to pay that. Since then, basically, 2017, when Mike came, and trying to start to build that, the septicage, because we had all this tankage, we've been able to not charge users for the improvements we've made. And, you know, the best part about being able to do a tour in the daylight is that, especially, it's all, it's due to Mike, but we only have a couple of guys here. Our staff isn't bigger, but the project had tackled, has built a place that, we almost refitted. When Prime left, we were at the 20-year end of the previous upgrade, and we had a bunch of crap. School Street, this place, was all shot, and Mike has got everything quite well replaced. We have a lot of automation. We have a lot of, one of our latest projects is tying in our, and thanks to the town as well, because we have hooked up on the water tower, we're tying in the pump stations to the main control here. Well, heck, I think Mike can see them at home on his computer. So you have better alarms, better control of, you know, what's going on. Yeah, actually, you didn't save money, so that, we've got a couple more pieces to finish for that project, but it's, there's just a lot of things throughout the whole place. I know Mike would like to get on the list. I'd like to get on the list, but, you know, we won't keep you, we can talk about it. Anyway, what that brings us to, in 2020, the advent of COVID, and we, we, with the advent of stimulus money, or the possible chance of stimulus money, we put in what we needed to put in discharge applications and intent in order to have ourselves in line for any kind of financing for the stimulus funds. And at the beginning of this year, we had to move forward with that. We had to put, put together a package that Steve just submitted not too long ago to SRF.
Yep, Maine DEP.
Maine DEP.
Clean Water SRF.
And they, you know, as far as what we needed and what was coming, and so, I just wanted to cover the point up until that happened, and, you know, beginning of the year, where Steve took off as far as doing the evaluation of the plant, where we stand, and where we could be needing to go. I'll leave it for you.
All right. Well, thank you, Jay. Jay did ask me to attend tonight and speak about the project we did for the district, and this one was the treatment plant improvements project. What you do typically is a report to evaluate the facility, and you come up with cost estimates for capital improvements. And this was necessary, number one, to meet the Clean Water SRF requirements. You need an engineering report, and you need to document the need and identify the projects. And then also, that gets you on the list when you submit it to the state in order to get Clean Water SRF funding. So the report was done, and we did submit it to Maine DEP in September, and they came back with, that they received it, and that the projects, in their opinion, would be eligible pending the permit requirements. So I wasn't quite sure what you wanted to cover for subjects, but Jay gave me a little bit of a heads-up. Do you want me to hand out the write-up that I did?
We can. Nobody has to read it now, but.
At least, what I'm supposed to say is on your sheet. I only made 10 copies, so one of us, maybe you and I can cheer.
We've seen them, so.
Well, see, I think Steve is, I mean, one of the things you started with is going to DEP to find out, you know, one of the things I think on James's list was permitting and the process. Every four years, generally, you're supposed to get a new license, a new discharge license. Our last license, we got in 2003. That's all we've gotten on. It's kind of odd, some places otherwise get them. It might have been somewhat due to Prime. I know 2007, we had a draft, but it never got carried forward. And so we're waiting for that. But right now, I think the big hole is this whole nitrogen deal in the river, and that's, I'll let you take it from there.
Exactly, yeah. The Maine DEP, in looking at our report, it was actually based on a meeting we had with the state to determine what the future permit limits might look like. And at the time, they couldn't guarantee it, but the people in charge indicated that most likely, the plant would have a total nitrogen limit. And that is based on, you know, the Great Bay estuary and the nitrogen concerns there. And Maine was aware of it, I think, four communities in Maine that are in the Great Bay estuary, and so they all would have to deal with a nitrogen limit. And they actually calculated it based on what New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services came up with nitrogen allocation. I think, Mike, it was 29 pounds a day of total nitrogen. At the, at your permitted flow of 1.1 MGD, that also would translate to a nitrogen limit of 3 to 5 milligrams per liter.
This is the nitrogen being discharged into the river you're talking about?
Correct. Yeah, and what the permit does is allow you to discharge based on the assimilative capacity of the river or any water quality issues. And so as long as you meet that permit, you can discharge into the river. So we had planned for a nitrogen limit, which actually meant a major upgrade to the treatment plant. And so that's what we focused our study on. There are other parameters that, that could be wild cards here, and I just listed them. I'm sure you're all familiar with PFOS or PFOA, the forever chemicals. They were of concern, and I think, Mike, you're testing in your sledge for those now?
We're actually testing on the effluent. The state is funding a 10-month testing program.
Yeah, so that's a concern, that hopefully, there won't be any of those forever chemicals in the wastewater effluent door in the sledge. Aluminum is always a concern, and is coming up for water quality issues. Sometimes, treatment plants might use an aluminum chemical to remove phosphorus. And so it removes the phosphorus, but might be adding aluminum to the effluent. So those kind of concerns. So with that, I have a project description, and actually, a graphic on the last page. And it's the capital improvements program that we had proposed. We broke it up into two phases, and, you know, the district would set priorities based on need and also on available funding. But the first and major item that has to be done is converting two of the aeration tanks to a process that will both remove phosphorus and nitrogen biologically. We were fortunate in that the plant was designed for 1.1 million gallons a day to handle tannery waste, a good portion of tannery waste. And in that, the aeration tanks were actually very large extended air, long detention time aeration tanks. This gives us the volume to be able to treat residential-type waste in a shorter time period and add on different tankage. And not to oversimplify, but it's as simple as putting in un-aerated tanks and mixing them and recycling the sledges in order to affect certain growth of bacteria. And so that's the process that's proposed. There's some hydraulic limitations. If we go to this process, we will probably not have enough difference in elevation between the aeration tanks and the primary clarifiers. So we will, we've sized it so that we will not use the primary clarifiers. So that's the program. It's $7.3 million in major upgrades, and then another $3 million in additional requirements. So that's the program, roughly $10 million that we looked at, and what we did was actually looked at user rate impacts. So that's really the last part of my discussion, is just the idea that if we're funding a $10 million program, we go to the Maine Municipal Bond Bank with an SRF loan, and we borrow at 20 years, a certain amount, and pay it off in that 20 years, but the user rates go up. And so we looked at that user rate impacts and what that fee would be to raise the rates. And that's actually, you know, the fourth, third and fourth page in. The major upgrades and then the additional considerations are two different tables. But it will, without any kind of grant funding or loan forgiveness, which I think Berwick is eligible for, depending on how your census, you know, your median household income in your census area goes. And you have to be under a population of 10,000 if you want RD grant money. So those factors. And then the SRF program will look at loan forgiveness for you. But we didn't add any kind of loan forgiveness or grants into this assessment, and it shows the two different levels of user rate increases in these other two tables. So these are clipped out from the report, so that's why they're not looking uniformly. The only other thing, I wasn't sure if you wanted to talk about it, Jay, was just the equity buy-in fee and the system development charge.
Yeah.
When I, you know, when I took a further look at our system development charge, that's what we call it, I recognized that the plant capacity is only one train, one out of those three trains. That was the only train that was upgraded to, you know, BNR process. And so we really only have a third of that capacity. In fact, we did the report with that one train modified, and came up with it would handle 290,000 gallons a day. And so that's why the system development charge changed, because we changed the capacity from 1.1 million permitted to 290,000 gallons per day actual. So, you know, the facility now is permitted for 1.1 MGD. That's a real economic benefit. If you build out the treatment plant, you can discharge as much as that. But right now, that plant is basically built out a third for a BNR process. And that's the difference. So that was the only number change, and we ended up with a system development charge of 1391 per equivalent drawing unit. We also have the ability to change that based on organic load or solids load. If an industry came in and had a high VOD, you could actually make that calculation and do that change. How are you taking the phosphorus and the nitrogen out of it? You said something about, what are you using to do that? How's that work? So the proposed treatment plant, biologically, will have un-aerated tanks, and depending on how we recycle flows, it will either remove phosphorus or it will remove nitrogen. Where's it going to? What's it removing? So the phosphorus, biologically, will be actually removed in the sledge. It will be the bacteria that grow in that. Okay, so the bacteria is going to take care of the nitrogen. Yeah, for phosphorus. Oh, just phosphorus. Yeah, just phosphorus. For nitrogen, Mike already converts the biological nitrogen to, the ammonia to nitrates. And an un-aerated tank, when you recycle those nitrates, will use that source as a source of oxygen, and so will actually remove the nitrogen as a gas. So the phosphorus comes out in the sledge, the nitrogen eventually will come out of the process as a nitrogen gas.
Right, right, okay. It's all biological, anyway, yeah.
It's all about manipulating the biological activity in each tank. Each tank is gonna.
Different enzymes.
Bugs are gonna do a different job in each tank, and it's our job to manipulate it, like you said, either with no air, with air. And so that's the whole reason why we have to build different zones. In Jay's picture, you see these big open tanks. When the tannery was here, you just added air. We need to build tanks inside those tanks with different mechanisms to create different environments, because it's a lot, the limit is a lot harder to meet now, especially with this total nitrogen. It's definitely meetable, and it's, it's all about money. It's all about putting these tanks in.
Yeah. And one critical component I didn't mention, but Mike would correct me, is we still need to add chemicals. Call it belts and suspenders, but also, we have a low TSS effluent limit, and without chemicals or another process like filtration, you wouldn't get the low TSS number. So this five-stage barden foe will also include in it chemical addition to remove phosphorus and mostly to remove the TSS. So that's another.
Berwick has a very strict limit. We're very stringent compared to most treatment plants. So we're up against, because of the river, it's always based on what you're discharging into. And compared to a lot of treatment plants in Southern Maine, we have tight, tight limits, and we do a good job to get there now.
Part of that came from Prime, and, yeah, we got rid of, we got rid of the common sense ones, some of them, not many, but, yeah, the tight limits are difficult, and being on this river doesn't help. A lot of places, not many places have to chlorinate or disinfect, but because of clam flats down the river, we have to do it year-round. And anyway, that's, that's part of the permit. Now, if DEP does come back with a permit, and they say, hey, you have to take out, remove so much nitrogen, it gives us a limit, I mean, it's not an overnight thing, you know, it might be a process of five years. We expect it. Really don't think it's going to be long now. You know, so you have time to build and prove what you're gonna do, but, you know, we're just trying to be, get ahead and be ready. That equity buy-in fee, when the board first adopted it, the old fee had no basis, and so we asked these guys that come up with the fee that had a legitimate basis that other people used, and that was it. And at the time, I think, we adopted the lower rate. We didn't have this, the sight of what we, where we really needed to go in front of us, you know, which, when Steve brought us to that, 290, it opened our eyes a little bit there, so. Anyway, that's kind of a thing we wanted to get to, I guess.
Yeah, there also was an item on permit.
Yes.
The permitting process. You mentioned four, it's five, every five?
Five years?
Yeah, that was the cycle. And 20 years is, well, 2003 to now is running, is 20 years, yeah. And that's, that's a pretty long time. I only know of one other permit, and that was the Pierce Island permit, that was 20 years old and not renewed.
And it's pretty, it's the nitrogen that held it up. The New Hampshire, they were working with the EPA, with New Hampshire to get it going, and Maine just said, we're gonna step aside, because Maine's a delegate state, they do their own, they write their own permits, obviously, they gotta go through the EPA, but that's what the holdup was. Maine didn't quite agree with what they were doing over there, so they basically said, let's, let them fight it out and see what's gonna happen, and that's what they did. And now, New Hampshire has their permits in place. We got left with the leftovers, because we obviously have to do whatever the EPA says at the end of the day. And so now Maine's going, okay, we gotta divvy out what they've given us. And that's where, and that's the beauty, is though, we weren't good with the DEP, like I said, we can see what's coming. So, and that's what we're doing. We're trying to plan so we're not caught down the road with no funds available at all. We're trying to make sure we have this stuff lined up.
What happens if we don't have any funds? What would they say to you? Would they lend you the money or?
Steve might be able to.
That's how you go pound rocks.
I mean, you have a license in your permit, and you have to meet that permit. If you get a new permit, and you have new limits and you fail to meet those, after a certain time period, they'll do either a consent decree or administrative order. And, you know, they're dragging along enough. So they don't step up with any money? No. Yeah, it's a, every year, you never know. Sometimes there's money because of, like Jay said, the 2020, ARPA 2020 and the infrastructure programs. So the money has become available year to year. Yeah, they don't, they don't say, upgrade, here's some money. Well, if it's real important, because we're discharging out of the river, that would bring us up into a higher priority to maybe get some money. It does. In fact, the rating system reflects that. If you're under an order to meet a new permit limit, you get a higher rating, and it makes it more eligible for. Money. Low, low interest loans and loan forgiveness.
Have you guys started looking at the infrastructure money? Is anything there for you, or?
Well, the district is on the list.
Yeah.
And, you know, they have to do the application, but I'm not sure about the amount of loan forgiveness that they talk about. Gonna get the application and.
Have you been in contact with congressional people and stuff like that?
Generally USDA and DEP for the stimulus funds, and, yeah, I don't know.
Because I know the town before was dealing directly with Susan Collins' office.
Yeah.
You know, directly, and I can't remember who Steve was working with.
Alex.
Alex. And she was making sure we got a lot of money for the downtown projects. You know, so we should all start bugging our congressional people, because the money's there. You know, is, we just have to make sure that they know we want it.
Right, right.
If we don't say anything, it's not gonna come our way, so.
More importantly, it's gonna be used, you know? We're not, not just gonna put it in the bank and find a project, we have a project with a plan.
I think especially if you tie it to, without upgrades, it's, can inhibit the density and growth of their downtown. It's an extremely marketable project, and you just put it right there and just say. It's an extremely marketable project and you just put it right there and just say.
Yeah.
Our downtown will have a hard time growing and sustaining it if we.
Right, we would have limitations on what we could allow being built down there without being able to do these upgrades that Steve's talking about.
Yeah, cause dealing, dealing with Susan Collins' office, we've got, what, ten million dollars for the downtown projects? So there's, uh, it's Doc calling. And what's the source? Um, that was through, that was through ARPA, infrastructure.
Your marks.
Airmax, there's, yeah, no, like I said, we just started bugging them.
The town, uh, received, um, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of loan forgiveness in the S R F program for the water upgrades.
Yeah, the S R F, they have lots of funding available, more than they can actually give out. And that's usually why, in water and wastewater, Steve kinda turns towards that direction. Uh, they're usually the go-to, but there may be other sources.
So there are, we just have to bug them.
How much damage does discharge create?
Well, that's, so that's what he was saying, simply, we have one point one million, we were eligible to discharge. We have this massive treatment plant that Prime gave us, which is, that's gold, because you don't have to put those tanks in the ground. We discharge around two hundred thousand a day because we only have a third of that system online. And we got a little bit of room for growth right now, but if we really wanna build up like everyone wants downtown, that's where Steve's comes into play and we need to get another train. The other problem is, as you know, if you have one car and that car breaks down, how are you getting to work? So you know, you need redundancy too. So at the end of the day, this, this second train has to happen. And like Jay said, it's not happening today, it's not happening tomorrow. But if we can plan this three, four, five years out and do it right and not put it all, burden on the people like that real hard, that's what we're planning, that's what we've tried to do, that's what this list shows what we've done. I mean, we've rebuilt the plant without hammering people.
The, uh, and it's different responsibilities, you know, a new permit which gives us new limits, that's really everybody's responsibility to pay for it and everybody that's already here. But if it's, you know, you can almost split it, I guess, but the, the creation of more capacity, that's for somebody coming in. I mean, that's basically like funds from that fee we were talking about gets set aside and you have to spend it within ten years towards capital projects that qualify, so.
I wanted to get some clarity on the, on the fee structure, cause I'm not sure I fully understand it.
Sure.
Um, right now, there is an annual resident fee of six hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a resident on the, on the sewer system.
It's a user fee, yeah.
Yeah, pays six hundred dollars over the year for their, for their sewer system. It's not metered or anything like that, it's a flat rate per, per house, per, per unit.
So we don't use water?
Per residents, no. No, we've always been flat rate. We looked at the.
We talked about it in the past years about tying it in with the water system and stuff.
When, uh, Lisa was here, we, we hired, uh, Main Roll Water and then we did a, a study and came up with a couple of options as far as rate, uh, rates and who gets charged and all that sort of thing. We're able to tie together through map and lot, each of our, our databases, which was interesting. And then you figured out, well, who's got water and not sewer and vice versa and all that sort of thing. But by the time we got all, all done, um, and put it all together, at the time, it, it wasn't of interest to the trustees. There just, it didn't seem, it wasn't worth the work to go through to.
There's advantages and disadvantages too. Because if everyone starts tightening up their water, well, that's bad for the sewer system, cause you need water to flush the system. Second of all, at the end of the day, just like you guys, we got a budget that we have to survive on. And if, let's say it's a million dollars and everyone tightens it up and it goes down to five hundred thousand, the next year, we have to adjust our prices, jack it up and now they're really mad because they just redid their houses. But we're gonna jack the price up, cause at the end of the day, we still need to pay for our budget. So there's advantages and disadvantages and.
So the more flow you can get in here at the present time would be better.
Well, you need flow to flush your system and stuff, cause that's another problem. If you start getting systems dry, that are dry, they cause odors, they leave stuff behind in your lines, plug them out. Uh, they're just, we get where people say, oh, base it on flow, but there's benefits to doing it the way we do it too. Cause it's a, at the end of the day, we know what our budget is, it's done, we get what we need to fund the budget. Uh, so there's definitely hit some misses on both ends of it.
Does it even up, Jay? In other words, if we look at the water the town's using a day, is it, is, is that more or less is the same of the water that's coming through the plant?
Yeah, for the most part, we do have, we do, we, we do have I N I infiltration or, you know, illegal some pumps that, that kick that up or maybe a leaky manhole. We've inspected all the manholes if we see, you know, when we find any that are in a ditch or subject to taking on, we try to eliminate that.
So it's not too bad then, I mean, it's pretty close.
No, it's not a huge difference and, and right now, I mean, it was, it was a big concern when we had Prime here because we actually ended up paying them a bunch of money trying to buy capacity back, which it didn't make sense to us that, how do they own the capacity? But we were so close to our permit limit for volume and especially when we had huge storms with Prime and the extra water coming down the system, which a lot of it was from Prime, because they actually had roof drains and everything hooked up to the system.
Well, that's why we, we do a house in Dover that's.
Yeah.
All the house, we have to get a check with the city because the ground, the drains from the roof.
Yeah.
Are piped right into the sewer and you gotta block them up.
Yeah.
Block them up.
But, uh, yeah, long story short, I mean, it's not a huge issue with, for us, uh, no.
So that's the annual residential fee. What, and so what, how's that different from the three sixty-eight current that's gonna be from thirteen ninety?
Basically what this, what the, uh, original, yeah, I added onto a chart that we'd already done, or Jessica did here. This is all information from, uh, Main Roll Water and I just tried to pick the towns that, in Southern Maine.
Yeah.
And that, that residential fee in the third column is what it costs to hook up a residence.
Okay.
To the system.
That's the connection fee.
Yeah, on the back, uh, that was when we, uh, changed how much that fee was, if you look at the page after.
Yeah.
That, I mean, that's where it still puts us, we're still quite.
So somebody builds, somebody builds a new house on the system, the, starting January first, the, the cost to connect that to the sewer system is gonna be thirteen ninety.
Yeah, that's the fee, yeah.
And then whoever lives in that house is gonna pay six hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, that's not bad.
That makes all sense. That, that, they even clarified that. Um, my other question is, how are, um, businesses being, um, uh, being, uh, being charged? Cause they're not residential houses, they're, they're businesses, some use more water, some use less.
Yeah, what we, what we did a couple of years ago is we adopted a, a, a larger sheet than we had. What, our one rate system was much smaller for quite a long time, but anticipating what might come with downtown and everything.
Yeah.
We adopted a larger sheet that's based on, um, uh, main engineering standards. Like if you build something that needs to be put on a septic system, they have standards that have been adopted, yeah.
Yeah.
Adopted over years that say, well, for this business, you gotta charge this much, you know, there's this many gallons coming out of it or this sort of use, there's that many gallons coming out of it. So we basically, um, yeah, developed that assignment sheet for units, for household, household units according to that. Now, right now, you know, we've used it a little bit, there's some re, some things that, um, I think we're gonna work on and basically from our last meeting, one of my projects right now is to come up with better policies as far as applying those.
Hmm.
You know, how, how to use them. We tried to make it broader so that it applied, applied to all sorts of different businesses, which is fine. But you still, and when it comes to commercials, units, the sheet still says at the bottom that you need to come and talk to the district. You know, cause everybody is just a little bit different.
Yeah.
And it depends on if you're, uh, what they're discharging, maybe heavier, more solids like beer waste or, you know.
Yeah.
Or just residential.
We have a brewery and a, and a butcher shop and they clearly are gonna use different levels of water. But if they're in the same size unit, are they gonna pay the same, you know? And so it's, it's, um, you know, part of, uh, part of why we wanted to have this meeting is to, because, one, we've never had this meeting. It's never, it's never happened as long as I've been on the board. Um, so we wanted to get a better understanding of what's going on in the sewer district.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and also, you know, we have this big downtown project, we're trying to get a lot of new businesses downtown so that we can, you know, expand Berwick in a, in a positive way, not just one giant business that when they leave, they take sixty-five percent of the capacity. Um, but we just wanna, uh, understand how, you know, we can make sure that these new businesses are gonna, they're gonna be charged if, make sure there's any, you know. If there's an old system, we need to get a new system, whatever the system might be, just make sure it's fair to everybody that's coming into town so that, you know, we don't create any bad blood.
Right.
We want, we want people to come, we want them to stay, we want them to be long-term businesses in town.
Understood. I mean, our intent is all to be fair. Um, I know the board and all I've worked with them has been very pro-business, supportive of anybody coming to town. We all, you know, when we, I think, where, from where I started, the year I started here and we lost Prime and sixty-five, seventy percent of the income, for years they were eighty. We've been waiting for this day, you know, it's like, just to get the use, to get the volume back up in the system. And so it's a, for us, it's a happy day, but of course we have challenges as well. So the, the, go back and talk about the fee structure here, the residential fee, you know, with the, the hookup of the residential. Um, is that the same for a multifamily home? Yeah, well, residents, that's, it's always been treated as a, a single residence, it's just, yeah, it's just that. So, uh, duplex will be a single connection fee? Dup- duplex would be two.
It's equivalent, it's the E D U, it's an equivalent to a user. And so if it's three-unit apartment, that's three. If it's four units, that's four.
So the, you, you charge three connection fees, three, four connection fees? Yes, yeah, for each dwelling unit, yeah, yeah, everybody, that, that's a, I mean, that's why they show it as the. In residential fees, cause for every, every residence or equivalent unit. So it's a connection fee, but how many sewer lines are coming out of that building? Just one? Could be just one, yeah. But it's still a multiple connection. It, I mean, uh, even a four-inch or six-inch pipe can carry a tremendous. Right. Amount of volume, it's just, it's a matter of what we get down here that we have to take care of. I can, I can understand the, the, the annual fee and all that, but it just seems to me that, you know, a connection fee, you know, maybe it's, um, we'll call it the equity buy-in fee, I guess, instead of a connection fee. You know, if you're making one connection for one house or one connection for four residents, it's still just one connection.
But it's E D U.
Four different houses pumping.
Right, it's not, it's not the physical connection that the charge is based on, it's based on.
So it's not.
Flow and the load.
The big bathrooms, right?
It's, it's the amount of loading that's going into the line.
Yeah.
So one unit, one house has, you know, of one unit, has less loading coming to the plant than four, five and so on.
So does a, a single bedroom have a separate one, a separate? Yeah, separate charge, yeah. If it's a one-bedroom apartment, yeah. Yeah, that's all. Yeah, I mean, you know, if you go through, um, any studies or in, industry records like this, if you look through the whole thing, I don't think there's anybody that, that recognizes a single unit. Nobody, I, I think they're generally all two units and up, you know, as far as for a connection or.
So the, the equity buy-in fee is going up on January first.
Mm-hmm.
But, but the annual, the annual fee that customers are currently paying, that's not changing.
That's their sewer bill, that's their sewer bill every year.
That's your sewer bill. That, that one is, uh, the board just decided we're gonna, for this year's budget. We started when, in, uh, two thousand and seventeen. The intent was to do small increments regularly, whether even annually. As opposed to doing what we had done in the past, we'd go for five, six years and end up being fifty, sixty, seventy dollar increase. And so you're looking at this year, a three percent.
Okay.
Just to keep up. I mean, chemical costs, polymers, everything we're dealing with, uh. Do you, do you guys have to go through the P U C for rate increases? No, ma'am, no, no. Uh, for us, it's a process of public hearing.
How many uses?
Right now.
It was eighteen hundred and something.
Fourteen, I think, fourteen or five or something like that.
Yeah, it's around fourteen equivalent units, nah.
I thought that was the E D U, no?
Says number of equivalent units is eighteen forty-two.
Yeah, 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 so we have, basically, I think we built.
Where are you seeing that? On the, this page.
Yeah, but those units may not be, uh, accurate to the representation of like a home.
Yeah.
You know, those units could be a hundred units in one building.
Yeah.
So.
We, we, but Mike.
The way you're looking at it, or like a laundromat may be assigned six units, even though it's one business.
And we charge, basically, at last, the last time we built this quarter, it was Mike was right, it's around fourteen hundred units. That's charged for, see, like a restaurant might be four or whatever, in multiples. Uh, we don't have a lot of commercial.
Is this an estimated build-out though, the eighteen hundred?
No, that's current. So maybe they'll explain it a different way, different angle. There's only about fourteen hundred bills that go out.
Yeah.
And in those bills, some of them are multiple dwelling units assessed.
That's, that, so there's like.
Ending up with eighteen hundred and forty-two.
So maybe the better statement is there's about fourteen hundred connections in eighteen hundred units that are being charged.
Quote like dwelling units.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
How do you have fourteen hundred? There's like a thousand water accounts, how do you have four hundred more additional gas yesterday?
No, this is the actual bills that go out.
You have fourteen hundred bills that go out?
Keep track of.
And there's four hundred more users, James? I'd have to. I'd have to look that up, you know, cause we, when we did that study, we had to figure out who had water and, you know, but, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I, I'm sure there's, there's places where it doesn't overlap. I'm sure there's, the way the systems were built out, I, I don't, I'm sure they were not built, you know, layered on top of each other perfectly.
Yeah, like, uh, when they put the trunk up, Pine Hill, Old Pine Hill, probably a lot, lot of those residences were, that were, made to connect their, start paying their fee.
But there are well water.
Yeah.
Had well, yeah, had well water besides, you know, I, I don't know.
James might be right, maybe there are eleven hundred bills in eighteen forty-two equivalent dwelling units.
Yeah.
That eleven hundred sounds about right to me too when I looked at the billing records. But we hadn't looked at the billing records in quite a long time.
Yeah.
Who does the billing for the sewer department?
We do here.
You, you, I mean, the, like, does the board handle it or is it just the?
Uh, well, office staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not something that's like outsourced or anything.
No, we haven't, uh, basically, someone has to be here to take care of all our other billing and payments and.
Good customer support?
Yes, yes, that's true.
Customer, got people calling in, complaining about the bill?
Although since COVID, they really like having that box out front, so they don't have to have, you know, sometimes you get people come up to the window, like to talk for a long time. So it kinda helps make their day go better.
People like to talk in the town of Berwick? That's strange.
And we just, uh, the town was also helped, we, uh, with establishing, uh, yeah, online pay, which we never had, so we did that earlier this year and, uh, quite popular.
So, so is there a timeframe that you wanna get all this done? That we, you kinda got it planned out to get all, to do all this, Mike?
Uh, not really, but we're in the process of, first of all, we don't even know where the permit's gonna be yet. Probably by next year, we're gonna know where it is and Steve's basically gotta build this based on what our actual permit is. And like we said, we ain't had a permit in twenty-something years, so.
Who builds that, D E P?
The, the main D E P will do it and then get approval from the EPA.
Okay.
Uh, I'm pretty sure Steve, like, what Steve said is what's gonna probably happen is gonna be a total nitrogen limit. Phosphorus might get removed, but even if it does, we still gotta probably add a chemical which will remove phosphorus, but also polish the effluent because we have such a strict limit. So, I, I mean, we have a feeling for what's gonna come down the line. I think Steve is right on top of it. Uh, but we still are in a holding pattern to see where we're gonna be before you can design it.
Yeah, we're, we're keeping, keeping ourselves in line for the, uh, S R F funds as well as I've been talking to my contact, the USDA. We'll have to get Mike's, take up on Mike's, uh, advice and see if we can pressure anybody else. So what was the justification for the equity buy-in fee going up over a thousand dollars? Yeah, and that, as we explained, uh, when the board adopted that fee, mostly it was approved by our attorney. It was something that was regularly used, um, but it was based on our permitted, there's a couple of variables that go into the equation, our permitted flow, which is one point one million. What Steve's study really brought, brought home to us is that, no, you really, your capacity is only two hundred and ninety thousand gallons. And so that's the number we entered into the equation that caused, caused that. Which is right, I mean, we have, we, we do need to look at, we're in preparing for making a change, for increasing capacity as well as looking at being ready to, to adapt to a new license, a new permit.
And these are, and that fee is only charged once, when a building is built. When, when, but building is built and connected to the system, you know.
You're just paying the yearly fee.
And then, yeah.
Yeah, that is just the user fee, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the challenge I see with the system is the, how you determine the equivalent drilling unit. Kind of where I see some of the flaws in the system, because there are so many different variations of the, of the same use.
Yeah.
And it reminds me of like, in zoning, we have parking tables for, you know, based on the use, there's thirty different enumerated uses. And you have a specified designated amount of parking spaces, system doesn't work for planning.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I, I think, we were looking, I met with Jay a couple of weeks ago, we were looking at Kenny Bunk or something, a more simplified process. And what I like to see, I think, some of the feedback I've heard, I've heard some, some grumbling from a few different folks and, and it's just, they don't. And maybe if we can work on a local permitting process, I would just like to see, for them to be able to project what type of fee that they're gonna, they're facing. For them to be able to look at the fee schedule on the website and go, before they, you know, they're waiting for CO, they're guts to get a lock.
It is on the website, so the, the, the user, the EDU schedule is on there.
Yeah, that prediction chart.
If you're opening a laundromat, you can go in and see how many EDU units are, if you're opening a gym, I think it's by ten people, correct, my car's at thirty. So equations are gonna go in bathrooms, locker rooms, the more water you showers, so you, you can look at that and you can look at how many potential people you're gonna have in the gym, I think it goes by thirty for a gymnastics.
Is that how you did it down here, the new gym downtown here, so who did that, who decided that, how to build that? You go and you talk to them and?
Yeah, no, we did, and, and, as in any commercial one, that's what I'm finding, is that you still end up being, you have a framework to look at it initially. And, uh, this is what I'm finding in, in all the information I'm trying to gather about policies, I mean, this, it's a good framework to start with. But, you know, um, I think what we're gonna work on is, is fine tuning, y- y- you know, make it simpler. He mentioned, uh, Ki- Kenny Bunkport, theirs is a rate sheet, they're, uh, they're a flat rate system. And, uh, it's a lot simpler, but when I look at theirs, it's like, well, how do they accommodate this, or why do they charge that, I mean, it's limited, it doesn't. So I'm, I'm curious in how they do go to a business that's not on there, you know, um, anyway, that's just, that's stuff we're working on. Uh, you know, we wanna make it all work for everybody.
And the biggest thing is, they need to come down and talk to Jay and sit down, a lot of times they get on here, they don't understand it, and then they make it, they make it be what they want it to be. And then they get upset when it's not reality, so if you get on there and you're not, it's not clear, I believe it says to come down here and speak with the sewer district.
Yeah.
Jay can sit down and easily walk them through it if it's not clear, like he was saying, everything is based on, if it's a gym, so, so many people, every ten people or fifty, whatever it is. Same with the restaurants, based on how many seats, it's, and I can see how it's unclear to someone that's not used to the wastewater stuff. They can call and come down.
But the, so the fee schedule for a gym is, is for every ten registered gym goers. So whether that's a key card gym or Planet Fitness, the actual water usage is gonna vary, like, it's not.
Well, like I said, if, if the, if they're talking about changing the system, but the system is in place and it's pretty clear, whether or not the system has to be revamped is one thing. There is a system in place, it's clear, if they come down and talk to it, it's not a surprise, we're not trying to surprise people.
No, can, no, no, I get that, can you, maybe I'm being naive, but can you, um, show me on a website where it's actually on here? Cause everything I keep finding says, please come down.
Perfect.
So, so, so if we're talking about transparency, it's there, it's not, if you're looking from the outside looking in, you know, hey, I wanna build a business in Burbank, I wanna go to Summersworth. Well, Summersworth has a, have flat fee here, oh, Burbank's gonna tell me to call. You know?
What is Summersworth? Are they flat fee?
I'm not sure.
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying it is, I'm just, you know, looking at it from that point to say, oh.
Seven hundred and some were used.
And then we just said, oh, it's there, and it's not.
Yeah.
I've got, I've got it.
Look, so they just one flat fee, they're just doing one flat fee a year then, they're not billing by?
Uh, maybe by the quarter, I don't, I don't know.
But by the water usage, no?
They may go by water usage, yeah.
Water bill, yeah?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess my, I guess my suggestion would just be, just put it on a website.
I don't go to the website, but it's supposed to be on there.
Yeah, it's, it, it's got the click here and then it goes back to contact us.
And to your, and to your point, to, and to your point, where, you know, uh, website is a work in progress.
No, no, and, and, no, and I get that, I think that's just.
Ours is too.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, correct, our, the town website has its own, thank you. I just think then you could say, like, really, it's, no, you, you looked at that before you, before you came to us.
So I just wanna ask one question, the, um, so, uh, the, the equity buy-in fee, so we have, you know, Great Falls doing their, how many units are they building out over there?
Two hundred and sixty.
Two hundred and sixty, so they're, they're gonna pay two sixty times the thirteen ninety? Or are they paying the previous fee because that's when they are planted, I don't know?
They paid the, whatever the fees at the time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, uh, uh. Like, the original building, we already started, the, uh, the rebuild.
Yep.
You know, that one there, we already started assessing units and so basically, my agreement with them is that I apply that. The older rate, cause they, they already made that connection, you know, I, I go by the time they connect to our collector system.
Okay.
You know, cause that's when that money is due, is when you to get that permit to tie to our system.
Got it.
So I, it's.
That gets paid right up front.
Yeah, and, and their building, the only thing is, we don't know, we only knew what was going into three units and so. We charge like a readiness to serve for the other ones that aren't occupied yet, uh, or one, one EDU, one that, as one unit. And then when somebody moves in there, we're gonna have to assign however many units for their regular.
Depending on the business.
It's basically like a thousand bucks a month, or it comes down to, I mean, a hundred bucks a month.
Yeah.
For the, for the, if you gotta take the fee and bill it monthly, right?
Yeah, I mean, but it's.
A month, a year?
Well, that's a one-time fee, you're not paying that, that's just, that's just once. This is, this is a one-time fee, these are your annual fees, that's a one-time fee.
Aren't we going up on this though?
Yeah.
To six hundred. That's it?
Yeah.
That didn't look like it was much at all.
And, and that, and that's billed quarterly, so the six hundred that's going up to six twenty, we build that.
I don't think that's, I mean, my quarter joint is a hundred bucks a month. I, I don't think that's bad.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, yeah, but.
No, no.
Just to clean this.
This is what the problem is right now that everyone's discussing, and that's what we're trying to explain how it's laid out.
I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
And it just, it was, it, New Hampshire has a great site for wastewater.
No.
The average, the average wastewater bill for a residence is seven hundred and twelve. And the average connection fee throughout the whole state is a little over two thousand.
A little over two thousand?
Yeah, to, to connect the unit, yeah. You know, some of them are, some, some are really high, I, I mean, they've got it listed by all towns here too, but.
Cause you're right, when you look at the rates and you look comparatively, it's, it's well below you in the surrounding areas.
The other, so the other piece is, so no matter how big of a single family house it's charged, like a studio one bedroom, it's charged the same as a five bedroom.
A residence, yeah.
So what's the?
That, that's common in a lot of places, um, some, you know, you'll find if you look at, uh, the industry report, ma- with main water. Some will charge by fixture, some charge by number of bedrooms, some charge by, you know, there's all different types of ways it's done.
How many bathrooms you have?
I think the, the single family, the multifamily stuff, that makes perfect sense to me, is the, uh, the.
Commercial stuff is what's tricky.
Yeah, the commercial stuff is where it gets tricky, like, for, uh, for instance, just the health club, the, the gym idea, it's per ten members.
Yeah.
So, like, do they have to report how many members they have to the, to, to the sewer district, or do you?
Yeah, it's kinda like a, we can check, but you know.
The planning board's middle is what sets the process.
Yeah.
And an application where they estimate their flows.
Gotcha.
And they would estimate the number of seats in a restaurant, the number of.
You get occupancy.
They would never estimate how many members they're gonna have over the life of their.
Yeah.
It's a, it's at the, the planning board level where they say, we're building a health club for three hundred members, you know?
I would think they would know that, you know, that by the amount of space and the amount of equipment in a gym, what you would have for a capacity, or what you could have for people. Because if you have a too small of a gym and you have a thousand people, but that gym, then you have to wait for machines, then people aren't going to that gym, right?
Yeah, I just asked for clarification, and we talked members in that case, and we're just looking at capacity estimate is what.
No, I, I think, to, to build off of what Steve's saying is, is you're getting the capacity, like, so Beauver opens a gym, he thinks in his head, for this size gym. And these, this many machines are, are free weights that I have, I can put twenty-five people an hour in there. And twenty-four hours, that's how I would think in, you know, to make it simplified, how he's gonna estimate it. Now, that doesn't mean that that's reality.
Yeah.
It's an estimation, it's an estimation, but we're not gonna go, you know, what do we?
Walking at nine o'clock on Sunday.
Yeah, and he's a list of your, uh, your, your, your members, I mean, it's, it's more of an estimate built off of what the planning board creates.
Okay.
When they issue the permits.
See, it, it, and I, the, the other side of that is also you have something like the beauty salon, where it's five chairs. I mean, that's, it's fu- it's fine as far as it goes, except if you have a beauty salon that can fit. It, you know, a person wants to maximize, they're turning a building into a beauty salon, they can fit six chairs, now they pay two, two, uh, two equivalent units, because they're over the limit.
No, that's, that's also something they could come down to the district and, and say to Jay, hey, can we pay a quarter unit, can we pay a half unit?
Yeah.
There's flexibility, you, you know, like you go on the website, and Mike, you looked at the website and he said, you know, talk to the district, it's, you know. Um, uh, Corner Point Brewing.
Yeah.
Has been in long talks with, with Jay about his flows and the amount of, um.
Does, does, does he have anything different that comes out in his flow that affects?
We, we charge the, the manufacturing flow separately, we, we go by gallons, you know, the gallons that he, we determined early on what, what, um, the, yeah. Nature of his beer waste was, and that it takes him three hundred and forty-five gallon, whatever, how, so many gallons per batch. And so at the end of the quarter, I'll get, I'll get the report of how many batches he brewed and.
But does it, does it affect how, how you treat it, when, when it comes into with the stuff, the regular household stuff, there's a brewing?
Well, I mean, every, every different waste will affect it, um, they're, yeah, they're a little bit stronger than a domestic house, so yeah, it costs more to treat them, that's why Jay has come up with a price. And he does it per batch and that, so many gallons, so I mean.
Yep.
We've, I feel like we've done it pretty fair.
Yeah, you can't compare gallons of water because it carries so much more weight, so much more organic.
Yeah.
That's dead, and, and that's the same with everybody, you equate that to, uh, equivalent dwelling units, so we know what comes in a. Average household waste that comes out of the pipe, so you can equate a commercial user, depending on what they're discharging, you can always equate it back to that, that one standard.
So there is, there is room for give and take if someone is just over or around a limit, or they have a special.
We, I, we, I mean, we did with the original exercise place as well as in, and with Corner Point, I mean, we made concessions, you know, where he doesn't have showers. You know, it's, you know, so you don't have that use, and, well, I'm trying to run anybody out of business, but we want, we wanna get fair share.
And I don't think that a hundred and fifty dollars a quarter is gonna run anybody out of business, that's not, that's just, you know, just making sure that, you know, i- it's. The system is equitable and everybody, everybody can, can understand it and just get a fair, i- i- if, if it's, you know, as simple as. Coming down here and talking to whoever's here at the time and just, you know, getting a fair shake at it, then, you know. That's part of what being in business is about, sometimes, you know, you gotta go and wheel and deal.
And through the structure of our charter, um, and rules and regs, if anybody is ever unhappy with I, what I decide, what I give, they appeal to the board. They always can appeal to the board.
And is there any fluff in there in the, in the, in the rate, yearly rate, in other words, is it, do you have any money left over that's gonna go into a, an account that you can use to pay down some debt or?
Well, that's what Jay kinda opened up with that statement, when the, uh, accountant said to reinvest your money rate back into what we have. Because we didn't have enough right now.
We don't.
Have enough to do it.
We, we, we don't have a lot, we, we.
Is this gonna give you more?
Will it give more?
Yeah.
I mean, we still, we'll have more stuff to treat, um.
This will allow us to put the equipment in to treat the extra flow, that's the whole point of this equity buying.
So it'll pay for it, okay.
Yeah, it's supposed to help pay for it, I mean, it doesn't finance it all.
Doesn't finance it, you do.
But the, the money we're reinvesting is not a, I wouldn't say it's, it's, it's really, it's just, we're putting it right back in the capital improvement.
Right.
Like the building, the off building next door needs a new roof soon.
I don't think that's a new, a lot of money a, a year.
Those type of examples.
You know, if you went up to eight hundred bucks.
Yeah, yeah.
Do people actually come down here and bitch about that?
Yeah.
Uh. I mean, we, we did it under the spectrum of other towns in Southern Maine, you know, we fall in the middle of that for the regular.
Taxes going up, come on.
What are we paying for the septic tank, Bob?
They complain about everything.
Three hundred and fifty bucks, right?
I don't know, I don't pay.
No, I, I, it's, I do, I do for mine, I think the septic guy is like every three years, it's about three hundred and fifty dollars.
Every few years, it's like, it's supposed to be like every five years.
It's easier to pay for clean water, you can say, oh yeah, I wanna buy my water, but when you pay for the dirty stuff too, it's like. Um, you know, the one thing I wanna point out, and I can't, I can't say, uh, compliment Mike enough, I mean, Steve will attest to it, we, uh. We did a project where we, we installed a couple of machines, the board knows, and, uh, what our guys have done on their own for some of the projects has been amazing. And that, that one, even the engineer said, yeah, that probably saved over a hundred thousand dollars by not involving an engineer and so much and, uh. Bidding it out, and, uh, they've done some fantastic stuff, and that has saved us a ton of money as well, um, yeah, I just had to give him his kudos.
Yeah, we do, you know, the, the staff here, Mike, they GC the projects themselves, so there's not a GC involved, so that probably takes twenty percent out of it, if not more out of a price. They're self-performing work that, you know, uh, can be done with, uh, the equipment we have and the skill sets, whether it's running conduit, whether it's installing pumps. And then they get to like, say, the hooking up to the skater and the wiring part of it, that's where we bring in our electricians who are contracted through the project anyway.
So the, the septic you guys bring in, you know, you've been doing that for what, five years now about?
Since seventeen, that's when you've seen a lot of these big capital improvements were allowed to happen.
Right, is how much, how much you guys bring in now?
We're about five million gallons this year, we slowly ramped it up progressively because we didn't have the equipment.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we built it in, and, uh, we're doing really, in every year, we've gotten more efficient with our treatment and our chemicals, our power. So it's kinda, you're bringing in more income and spending a little bit less to treat it, so it's been, it's been pretty amazing to get to where we're at.
Bringing in five, five million gallons a year?
Of special waste like septic and holder.
Yeah, they truck it in.
Yeah.
Jeez, that's a lot, huh?
The, uh, and, uh, the way it has turned out, which was surprising, and one of the things Steve found out when he started looking at what are our options. Um, is that it's actually beneficial to our process, so that one train that we have, um, you know, we used to take sludge. Or septic in and let it flow in through the system and you get shock loads and, you know, it ended up setting it, but now Mike adds it to a tank and basically. Homogenizes, air eats it for some time, so that we have a consistent product that's coming out of that tank and put it to the process every hour, every day. It keeps the bugs alive, it keeps the, the operation optimal, it, it really, it's worked out to our benefit hugely, so.
Your sludge pile, something we used to talk about a long time ago, it is, uh, you ever find anything about installing solar on that?
It's possible, yeah.
They, they talked about letting you guys float the things on top and stuff, the, the stains and stuff.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go back at it, we had signed up with the main power options and tried to get into a project that CMP, I think, put too many, uh, hurdles in the way and. Expense, and I just got a letter this week, these guys haven't seen that they have totally scrapped the project. If it had gone through with the way it was planned, we'd have made it all fabulous, I mean, the way they had the prices work, but, uh.
Right.
Yeah, it got, it got nicked, so now probably we'll be back looking at the pile.
People that don't know, what are you explaining, the, the sludge pile left over from the tannery out back, they can't get rid of, right? Is, uh, it's there forever.
Well, it was either, that was at the time, is do we truck it away, or I think it was Frank Underwood's idea, let's cap it where it sits.
Right.
And, uh, they did that, and for years, we had to provide testing on groundwater and all the monitoring wells all around, uh, to third party, then we were doing it for ourselves for a while and. Eventually, it, it probably six years ago now, they, their DB came back and said, nothing has moved, nothing's changed, there's no migration, so. Pull the walls out of the ground and make sure you mow it once a year.
So you, so you could have, you can probably put something on there.
Yeah, because of the cover though, you have to have, they make pedestals that, that sit on it, um, in fact, when I first asked about that, maybe two thousand and ten. I went to DEP, said, hey, can we do that, and he said, no way, no way. But then I was like, yeah, Frank sent me a paper that said, hey, up in South Portland or somewhere, they're putting it on the landfill, I said, what? So I called the same office and the guy said, yeah, you know, I said, well, how come this guy told me I couldn't do it, you're doing it here, he said, well, that was this guy, he's gone now, he said, I like that, you can do it. It's like, okay.
When the outlook just put in a, a decent sized solar farm.
Oh, really?
Across the street.
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
The big, they follow, I think it's like eighty.
All the ones that follow the sun?
Yeah, I don't know with the, yeah, how much of an advantage or, I mean, they're probably more efficient, but.
And it's overcoming that, uh, initial cost.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's where you gotta figure out what are you, what are you gonna make off of that, you know?
Then, then, it's, it's doing more than paying the monthly bill for electricity.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the number of years it'll be paid for and.
Yeah, I mean, power is, uh, probably one of the bigger expenses in wastewater, you know, to run all equipment, so.
Yeah, we, we talked about that, you know, like I said, that was two thousand eight, two thousand and ten.
Yeah.
You know, talking about that.
Yeah. Gotta go back looking, you know, um, anything else, questions, uh? Gotta go back looking, you know, um, anything else, questions, uh, I don't think I had any other papers today. I mean, I mean, honestly, it's, I think it's great to have you guys here, I mean, we always thought you should do it more often, just a little.
Often than once in ever?
Yeah. I I had started some years ago, but yeah.
We did it once since I've been on the board, eight years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Down here, right down here, have we?
We had a board, we had a board, I'd have to go back and look, board subset means, right, one for every board, you know, and just it's, if you sit together, you you just share enough understanding, so it's like, you don't assume what what they're letting you do now with it.
Can't remember one, but I remember coming down here, sitting through a meeting here once, so.
Yeah, anyway, so.
Eight years ago.
Well, yeah, well, the way, the way the public talks about it, you think that when you hear about other boards and what they're doing, it's like every board sits in a cloud, in a in a shrouded room and is, you know, plotting the downfall of everybody else, you know, the plan, everybody's playing about the planning board or the select board or the, you know, so it's, you know.
Yeah.
That's much work down here.
Exactly, yeah, it's so, it's good.
Nice for us to come, because then if we feel the question, we have clarity to be able to answer that too without having to, you know, hopefully without anybody pounding on your door going, hell.
And 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 if you have more, you ask anytime, cause basically, you know, I've always felt it's an open book or a public entity, it is an open book.
Well, yeah, it's also.
We're happy about to share what we do.
It's also weird how the 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 things are separate, but also come, you know, they're they're, it's it's the bur work, you know, you know, uh, sewer system, but it's not fully under the the board's control, but the board does appoint the member, it's a, it's a.
Well, Ralph and I were talking about it earlier, before the meeting, you know, he said, well, why is it like that? I said, well, I think, you know, after the Clean Water Act came, and everybody started looking at what we were gonna do, the town actually made a good decision, because, you know, at that time, Prime was hooked up, and the river would turn a different color every day, and everybody would guess what it was gonna be today, and maybe the town didn't really want that responsibility, you know, let, design a separate district, that's just a guess, I'm only being silly, but I don't know what happened, but.
The tannery wanted to keep control of it.
Yes.
You know, that's.
Yeah, and 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 they did, you know, like the big blowers and stuff, I found stuff Steve was involved a long time ago, and where the big blowers they had here, you know, were trying to get VFDs on them to save money and power, and they totally nixed it, cause they bought everything, or eighty percent of it, you know, so, um, there's a lot of things that they fought paying extra for that could have been beneficial, but anyway.
If you have people in the town coming to you guys asking questions, even if you can't field the questions, all our meetings are uh, available on Zoom, our monthly meetings, so they would just email Jay and request that they wanna be a part of the meeting, he would send them an invite, or they could come down here publicly.
Do you guys have uh, many members of the public come to your meetings?
Only when we do a rate change, so we do a rate change and uh, the torches and pitchforks. As you guys know, when you raise taxes, right?
We hardly get anyone.
What with taxes, three years in a row?
No, this town has a history of people wanting to, you know, jaw until their mouth hurts, but not actually show up at a meeting to do something.
That's hilarious.
There's a lot of tears and tissues created, but no one coming and doing something.
They have to put on the Burwick hate page instead of coming down and trying to get.
They act like it's some nebulous faraway thing they can't affect, when all they have to do is come down every once, every Tuesday once in a while, they can say whatever they want to right then and there, but, you know.
We don't have a meeting tomorrow, do we?
Yes, we do.
Oh, shit.
Yeah, cause remember we couldn't do that.
We didn't do it last week.
You shouldn't have to heck watch it.
If you're here now, might as well make it work.
Can't we do it now?
No, we can't, no, we don't have any other warrants, we don't have any bills.
Because we made the offer, anybody wants to walk around a smelly sewer plant in the middle of the night, you're more than welcome.
No, I've seen it in the daytime, it's fine, I doubt much is.
In the daytime tour, eh, it's open for any time.
Did you see the water coming out of the plant that's been treated?
In the river?
Yeah, kind of, you can't see it?
No.
It come, it goes out to the middle of the river where the discharge point.
Dover's comes right out of a, you can see it coming right out of a waterfall where it's treated with, I think it's infrared or something like that?
I mean, basically, you can see at the end of the contact chamber before it goes to the pipe where it goes out, I mean, it's all.
So you can see the water, how clear is it?
Cleaner than it comes in.
There's a lot cleaner than the river.
Yeah, yeah. It it's interesting in that, uh, yeah, when Prime was here for, we developed our, we have to have water for process, and uh, in order to not have to pay for the town, we had a a pump and a well down by the river that they pump water up, and it was always a pain in the butt, but after Mike came, realized that uh, the plant had been designed originally with an intake from the final, you know, after everything's done, and before it goes to the river, to pull water from that back into the plant, and Mike rebuilt the whole system.
So that's what you're doing now?
We recycle our own water.
They could, they couldn't use it with Prime because it was actually too dirty, and you couldn't use it for.
You couldn't get it cleaned up enough.
Yeah, yeah, with the solids, and but with now, it's a fantastic system he built, and uh, it works well.
Oh, you know, they're doing gray water projects all over the west now, I mean, that's, that's the thing, because you gotta, for irrigation and.
Yeah.
I didn't realize the PFAs we might have in the water, do we have any in our water?
Well, that's what we're testing for right now, but.
What would you guess me, Mike?
The thing is.
It's in everything.
What we asked the state when we went up there was, so what's a high number, what's a low, we don't know, and they literally said, we don't know. So we're like, okay, what's gonna happen at the end of this, this study?
It's in the public water a little bit, it's on, it's on.
But it's still not hard line.
It's in everything.
So they basically said, we don't know, yeah, so when we get the number, then we'll tell you, some of you might have to do something with it, some of you won't.
So really, they don't, they don't even know like what an acceptable range it is.
Yeah, they have some random numbers, but it's not a hard line where they're like, this is definitely the health limit. They they admitted it, which is cool, with the state.
So I I couldn't say, oh, I can't take your water, I mean, to irrigate.
I've been drinking it for years now.
You can't take effluent, you can't take our water and do anything with it, but our permit allows us to discharge in one spot, one spot only. We can't water our own lawns.
Why?
Because it's in our permit.
What what's their reasoning, Mike?
I don't know, maybe Steve.
Well, it's a controlled discharge, so if you wanna do anything else with it, you gotta get a permit.
Yeah.
So.
It's just.
Would it be detrimental to water the backyard with it?
Yeah.
In my opinion, it wouldn't be, but it wouldn't be to the state, it might be called a spill.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just trying to get a grasp on how they, you know, how how it would be.
It, they probably would make you test to a certain standard if you wanted to put it on your lawn, like they might say, this is what we want you to test it for.
Yeah, I mean, you're you're absolutely correct, wastewater reuse is becoming more.
Oh, it's getting huge.
And usually it's the disinfection part that they want um, improved upon, so chlorine disinfection versus maybe UV disinfection. Um, so those kind of things, we're doing it actually in Star Island, they're reusing their wastewater for flushing their toilets, they used to use seawater. And um, yeah, it's wastewater reuse is working, it's higher bacteria requirement, yeah, yeah, it's excellent.
I've seen some really neat stuff where they're building systems for big buildings, big high-rises, basically taking the gray water and treating it and, yeah, recycling it for toilets and whatever, yeah.
Yeah, the big savings though is not using the municipal water at the wastewater plant.
Yeah.
Cause that's where that big cost is what, what again, repeat that, um, you know, the municipal water, the potable water.
Yeah.
Um, I think in the past, we've had to use that because the effluent from the combined wastewater.
So we're not using any?
We don't, we only use city water for like sinks and toilets, the rest of the water that we we use throughout the plant is recycled, like we make Paul, I've been running polymer batches all day, probably used eight, nine, ten thousand gallons of water for just that system. We don't have any, but a lot of treatment plants have sea water go into their pumps and stuff, and that can be plant water if it's clean enough. Uh, so yeah, if we go to city water, we're gonna go over our limit, and the water district's gonna send us a big bill. So we save a lot of money.
And reusing, you've only been in that for what, like the last five years then, is that?
Well, they used to use river water.
Okay.
And but that, in the winter, you'd get pipes freezing and breaking, it was, it was a nightmare, when I started here, they were working on that more than they were doing anything else. I said, let's get rid of that, so we built our own system in the basement.
That's awesome.
Uh.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, the other thing that's this, uh, you know, I appreciate about this meeting is just seeing that, you know, everybody's very knowledgeable about what's going on, that there's no, that people, they understand a lot of things that we don't fully understand, that's always important, you know, just that we, the right people are in the right place at the right time, and um, clearly stuff is getting done, which is, which needs to get done, you know, nobody wants to talk about it, but somebody has to.
I think it's excellent.
Somebody has to flush his toilets, you know.
Talk many times over the last two months, just between ourselves.
Yeah.
I'm not used to looking at an email or a text, you know, I like to get a phone call or whatever, you know, this young kid here, he wants to do emails, you know, or texts often, I say, use the phone, call up.
I'll call you.
Yeah, sure, I'll look at the fridge.
He was born before the nineteen eighties, he uses his phone as a phone.
I just don't look at mine.
He's just telling you.
I saw a great joke the other day, it was like, back in the early two thousands, we paid money for ringtones, now my phone has been on silent for six years.
Are you still paying for the ringtone?
No, I I don't use a ringtone unless it sounds like a phone is actually ringing, I don't, I don't, I don't need some space age noise to tell me when my phone's going up.
Steve, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
How many times do you use that water over again?
It just goes back into the system and will run back through the treatment plant and go back to the finals, so technically you can just keep recycling.
You could keep recycling it.
Like I said, we have two hundred thousand gallons of water we can technically recycle, obviously we're not using that much, but yeah, just could spray it back into the system and keep.
There's a neat system, mate, I wanna say Falmouth, I'm not sure, I went to see one time, it was a, you know, a mini, but I mean, a heat pump, there's one one sewer plant that actually has a heat pump that they use on Navy ships, um, where they use the water from the plant to pass through that heat pump, and it does all the heating and cooling, and it's really kinda cool, it's a neat setup. Anyway, we would talk about nothing, thank you, guys, I mean, anyone wants a tour, we're glad to go, other than that?
I'm still good before.
It was very good, thanks.